Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Mary Clark, if you would take the call.
Mr. Combs, Mr. Luther, Ms. Nelson, Ms. Reclu, Ms. Sebacher, Mr. Stone, Mr. Washington, Mr. West. Seven council members present and one absent.
Very good, thank you. At this time, if you would join us, Pastor Weaver is here to do our invocation.
The nation was hit again today in Texas Uvalde. So tonight, if you'll join me for a moment of silence, we lost 14 elementary children and a teacher today in that violence. Heavenly Father, as we meet on this rainy night, we remember that your providence and grace overrules all the trials and struggles that we face as humanity. And even in our moments of brokenness, when we see the travail of men and the suffering of children, we're reminded of how much you love each of us personally, unconditionally, and eternally. This moment of silence, Lord, tonight is not repetitive. It's heartfelt because Uvalde, Texas could be Fulton, Missouri. Small, heartland community in South Texas, lot of farming, some industry, much like us. Three or four smaller colleges and a small hospital, much like us. And it beckons to me to spend the time in this prayer to remind us all of how frail this life is and how mighty our God is if we trust Him to collectively help us through the woes and struggles and violence and division of the times in which we live. We need you, Lord, and we must confess that's true in every walk of our days. Now, for our community, I'm grateful, Lord, that we're moving forward. Second Street is progressing the infrastructure. Schools will be out this week in the elementaries and high schools. And summer will be full-fledged in activities in our parks and in our families and in our vocations. I am grateful, Lord, to live where we live and the times that we live. Help us to be reflective of the need, through your love, to continue to love one another. I pray for this session tonight, for our mayor and council persons, for those that have come from the community to share in this session. Our prayer always is that any discussions that are held and/or decisions that are made, that they first be pleasing to you. I continue to lift up our city family for any who are in bereavement, any kind of trial or affliction, any suffering unfettered or immeasured. We just ask you for your grace and all-seeing eye to continue to help and encourage them. For all that you do for us, we're just deeply grateful from our hearts and pray this together with one voice in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Welcome, everyone. Our first item of tonight is comments for visitors. And if you'd like to speak to the council, we ask that you come to the podium, give us your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes or less, please.
I think most of you are familiar who I am. Thank you for letting me have this opportunity. When I was on the council a few years ago, we discussed Ninth and Jefferson and that property that had burned. It's still boarded up. It's still there. No improvements have been made. It hasn't been demolished or anything. I would like to know, are we going to go forward? Are we going to make the landlords repair or do something with that? Also, recently, St. Eunice was resurfaced between Business 54 North, or Bluff, whichever you want to call it, and Miller. The street is eroding, and that new surface is going to end up in the drainage ditch. So I would like for that to be addressed. Thank you.
Mrs. Gray, please.
I'm sorry?
Tell me your address, please.
Four five one East St. Eunice Road, apartment 20.
Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name, please, ma'am.
Beverly Gray.
Thank you. I did not know you were there.
I did. Hi, Beverly.
Very good. Anyone else wishing to address the council? I know that guy. How you doing, Dennis?
Good evening. How you doing? My name is Dennis Bacon. I live at 6295 County Road 102. I own a duplex on the corner of Tenth and Grand Street. I guess it's scheduled to remove parking from Tenth Street in between Business 54 and Grand Street. And that duplex has a downstairs unit is a three-bedroom, one bath, and upstairs is one-bedroom, one bath. So that property has the potential to have far, five cars parking on the street at that location. There's no driveway. There's no off-street parking. So if parking was removed on that street, I have to find a location for five cars. So I'm asking that parking would be reestablished on that street. It's the north side of Tenth Street in between Bluff and Grand.
Very good.
Any questions?
The only one, you said you have three bedrooms downstairs?
Correct, and one upstairs. It's a duplex.
Will they be individuals or families from the three bedroom?
It just depends on the renter. Sometimes there is a family downstairs, and sometimes upstairs has a couple, which would be two drivers. So if it was two drivers, a couple downstairs with two children that also drove, that would be five cars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to address the council tonight? Seeing no one else come forward, we'll move on. Next up is our approval of the consent agenda. Council members may choose to remove an item from this session prior to approving the agenda. The only item tonight is our approval of the Directors of Administration's report of April 2022.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove the DOA report from the consent agenda tonight.
Okay, very good. So we will move right into that. We do not need a motion to approve the consent agenda. And go ahead, if you've got questions, Mike.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Page seven is the human resources report, and shows our total number of employees at 219, 10 elected officials, 175 full-time employees.
Page seven.
Is it 10? Okay, it's seven in the, okay, I'm sorry. Page three on the, I'm sorry. It's seven on the compiled report, sorry. So 10 elected officials, 175 full-time employees, and 34 part-time and seasonal employees. And current full-time vacancies, there's six of them, I'm not going to read them all. But the one that came to my attention is one called the executive assistant. And that is one that I've never heard of, and I don't remember the council ever discussing it and approving it in addition to the, to the number of staff we have on hand, which has been done in the past.
Right.
With added additional staff.
Right. That's a position that's being created to assist both myself and Ms. Tyler with day-to-day operations of the, of the City Hall. And we will be discussing that in great, a little greater detail tonight in the executive session.
Okay, because I'd like to know how it's being paid for, how much it's going to cost, including all benefits? Because I don't, I am not in agreement with adding an additional staff member. We have enough staff, unless we're going to eliminate somebody. So we can talk about it in the executive session. That's all I get.
Very good. Okay, anybody else have questions on the DOA report? I would move for a motion to accept.
Second. Make a motion to accept the DOA report?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions, discussion? I'll call for a question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All righty. Next up, we have our presentation of the financial statement for April. And Ms. Holtzlei is here to walk us through that.
I don't have a lot to report for April, but I do have the sales tax figures. The first quarter, we were right in line with the previous year. So I see that as we are falling behind because we've not kept up with inflation. So let's keep our fingers crossed and hope the next couple months are significantly better. The use tax revenue is up 9.7 percent, which is about $14,000. And you probably noticed when you went through the financials that the health claims for the month to date were very low, and that is because I did the accrual, and I took all the claims that had been incurred in '21 but paid this year, rolled them back to the previous year, and that amount was about $108,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions. You can see from the amount of capital that electric has been doing a lot of work down on Second Street.
Ms. Holtzlei? Evening. This has probably been on here, and I just haven't noticed it before. I'm trying to find it now. I think it was under gas and electric. I noticed something called, and I think it's maybe a, facility loan principal, is that the warehouse?
That's the warehouse.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Probably been there for a long time.
Yeah, since 2015, I think.
Yeah.
But that payment, that payment is allocated, the same for electric and gas. And then water pays a lower amount, and solid waste pays something, too.
Okay, thank you.
It's a 10-year note. So.
Remember that part. I'll move for approval of the financial.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right, thank you. Next up, we have unfinished business, Legends Rexplex update, and Mr. Caswell is here to give us a rundown on what's going on at the Rexplex.
Thank you. A little update on April. We offered eight programs in April, had about 200 participants in those programs. We had 34 facility rentals. Our daily use, our daily visitors, were down a little bit, but we still had about 5,800 people come through the building in April. We put a new exterior sign above the banquet room door, just kind of let people know that there is a banquet room there. And we're starting to see a lot more use of that banquet room area. In May, we had, we had the mayor's prayer breakfast, we had the city dinner, we hosted MSD's prom, firefighters did a training seminar there, and then we've had lots of birthday parties and baby showers and things like that. So it's been a busy May for us. This Friday, we're hosting the Fulton High School Senior All Night Party, so that'll be a busy night for us. And everything's going pretty good. Like I said, just looking to offer more programs. We're starting to, starting to really get towards our outdoor season more, so you're starting to see a lot more outdoor programs, baseball, swim team, things like that. But we're still looking at what kind of programs that we can do at Legends also.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
I know right now, we're starting softball, and with all the rain, would you be opposed to allowing us to use the facility for a practice if it's available?
I think we could. We, we did that a little bit last year. Probably the older kids, the area might be a little small, but I think for girls' softball, down to the younger boys, we could accommodate practices in there. So, yeah, that's something, if the coaches reach out to us and they want to do that, we can work it in if it, if it fits the schedule.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Clay, how is the, how's the scheduling during the week, during the day of the banquet room? And I'll preface it by saying, I've had a couple of groups approach me about, you know, them being able to have their monthly meeting, weekly meeting, every other week meeting, but, you know, to, to pay the full banquet room price is pricey from, from that perspective. And so I'm just wondering, is, is the business busy enough that we, that we need to leave that alone, or is there opportunity there where we could do some sort of bulk discount rate to some, some different organizations if they, you know, if they book 30 events at a certain price, something like that?
Yeah. We do, and our policies, we have it built in that if you, you have multiple rentals for so many days, you get a 25% discount. So, so we do have that built in. You know, if somebody wanted to come in and use the facility during the weekday in our slower time, because that is a slower time, we'd be willing to negotiate that and see what we can work. We have a smaller area, too, the classroom, where folks could have meetings. It's a little bit cheaper, so there's some options there.
How much, how many does that hold?
What's, I'm sorry.
How many does one of the classrooms hold?
We had both classrooms opened up Saturday for an event there, and I think they might have had, we had seating set up for about 40 people.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know if all 40 came, but that's what we had seating for.
Okay. I'll mention that, too, then.
Okay.
Thank you. And I guess I'd like to just finish by saying, I think that's something that we ought to think about. There's, there's not a lot of, of meeting places in town for smaller, quiet, I should say, there's not a lot of quiet meeting spaces available in town for our smaller clubs and organizations.
Well, like I said, we're, we're definitely open to anything. If, if people want to come visit us and, and check it out, we'd, we'd sit down and talk to them about it.
And if they rent the room, I'm sorry, if, if they rent the room, can they bring pizzas in or whatever they would want to bring?
Yeah, yeah. The only, the only really restriction we have is just the, the sodas, because we have the contract with Coca-Cola.
Right.
So, yeah, we can, we can negotiate all that if they want to bring their food in and things like that.
Councilman Stone, we're usually speaking on the, the classroom, not the banquet room itself.
I was speaking about the banquet room because I had actually forgotten about the classroom and was thinking that the classroom was much smaller than, than being able to accommodate up to 40 seating, so.
The only, the only reason why I'm concerned about the banquet room, because it is a large, it is one of the largest room at the Rexplex. And if somebody, if somebody rented on a regular basis, it would probably, it'd limit the opportunity for someone that really wants to have something large there because somebody else has rented. So if they can, smaller thing, smaller classroom works out, I don't have any problem with looking at that, yes.
Definitely opportunity there that during those down times, things like that, just getting the word out probably would help. Colleges, hey, the college. But, yeah, give Clay a call, and he'll, he'll work something out.
Definitely.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Clay.
Next up on our agenda tonight, we have new business. Our Westminster College President, Don Lofe Jr., is here to present a discussion on partnership between the college and Fulton Police Department, as well as the Callaway County Sheriff's Department for security cameras. We welcome you, President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. Appreciate the time tonight. My colleagues are going to hand out a couple schematics for you to reference these.
Just pass them.
I'll give you a minute here for that.
Thank you.
They got a little wet, as you can tell. Mike Cobb, he probably gives a picture here if you want to put it up against the chairs and see these. The college has been working on looking at our overall security across the campus for probably the last eight to seven, seven to eight months. And as part of that, we were looking at the camera system that we have across the campus. But we were also looking at a system from a vendor called Flock, and it basically is a system that looks for license plate recognition. And we had the opportunity to meet with Chief Ludwig's staff, also the sheriff's staff, the mayor, and Ms. Tyler were kind enough to meet with us, and we wanted to get their perspective on this. And we had several conversations related to what made the most sense for the campus, but just as important, when we talked to the mayor and Ms. Tyler, what was, what was the most important aspect relative to how we could assist the community? So we asked the opportunity to meet with you. We're not here to ask for any dollars, anything like that. This will be a college obligation. And we've had about a $55,000 to $60,000 investment each year by the college, and we're, our plan is to enact and run, take your questions, a five-year contract. And these will be basically, and they look like this on a pole, with a recognition for license plates. As you can see on the schematic, and this is the one I'm showing here, and then the one to the left, which is more of just a, a street map, there's 10 cameras. And working with the chief's staff, and also our own folks, and looking at this, we felt that the traffic on Westminster Avenue, and then Seventh Street, then a couple out streets, would give not only ourselves the opportunity for our head of security, Jack Banky and our security team, but also Fulton Police Department, the sheriff's office, our other constituencies, the opportunity, if there was a car, motorcycle, or any type of motorized vehicle, this would snap a license plate. And we're trying to do two things. One, if it's known, some form of prevention, but frankly, just as important after the fact, there's a recognition of a license plate. And the chief can maybe speak a little bit about how this would tie into a more broader system that would give you, I think, very quick recognition of something. There was a bet on campus, there was a bet very close to the, the perimeter of the campus or something along those lines. So we wanted to get any input that you had tonight, again, speaking with the mayor and Ms. Tyler. We thought that this was something, again, that would, if you will, benefit the community because it just doesn't have to be around the campus. This could be something going through the town, some of the unfortunate couple instances that we talked about. This could have potentially helped the police department when the vehicles were involved. And again, we're looking at this for safety and prevention, but again, after the fact. A couple other brief matters from questions on this. We looked at this very strategically for the campus, and these cameras are very sensitive. So if you look on the map, and I'm going to point this out so you can show, we put the cameras up here, right as you enter the campus. There's an area up there that you come in, and we look at the museum, and down by the stadium, the sports events, and also by the condominium, or the townhouses for the staff, excuse me, for the students, and then down here by the paternities, and then around the campus. And you might, and frankly, I asked the question, is 10 cameras enough? And, and the answer is, we're very comfortable that's enough. When you just start overloading this, it doesn't do anything. And frankly, with the cost of these, they're, they're around $5,000 apiece. We thought this made sense, and I'll let the chief give his view. The other thing that we had a lot of questions about with the inclement weather and so on, what would happen if these break down? And the vendor we work with, these are automatically registered if they go down, and they can be replaced literally within a day, and very simply done from a maintenance point of view. And that's part of our contract, would be a maintenance for these for five years. So Chief, did you want to say anything? Or Steve, or, or Jack as well? And I'd like our curator of the museum to give his perspective on the safety relative to the museum.
The Flock system that the university is looking at, and some people think, oh, a license plate recognition, what about privacy? Let me, let me address that. You're on a public street, you're driving a vehicle with a license plate in plain view, and there's really not an expectation of privacy to your license plate. Examples of how this can benefit the college and enhance their safety and security say they may have had a threat to a student, a staff member, somebody on campus, and we're investigating that. We know what type of vehicles they drive. We could input, we could look for that license plate and kind of enter it into the Flock system, and it would be flagged. Now, information, personal information would not go to the college. It would come to the police department in real time, and we would manage that information. Other agencies in the area, such as Jefferson City Police, Osage County Sheriff's Office, and I believe the sheriff's office might be looking at some of these for themselves. They could also gather this information and get it very easily through a, an agreement with Flock Safety that we already have in place. Last fall, we had the homicide in Stinson Creek on the, basically on the college campus. I think this could have been a game changer in our investigation to help us get a whole lot further, a whole lot quicker, if this could have been in place at that time. So there's one example. But say we have an intruder on campus or an incident, and we don't have a license plate. This system actually learns cars by the shape of their taillights. So if we said, we're looking for a, they just knew it was, say, a Buick Le Sabre. Show us how many Buick Le Sabres have come through. That is how sophisticated the system really is. So it, it could be a tremendous asset to public safety, and of course, the safety to Westminster and their, their student population and all their staff. So does anybody else have any questions?
You said the information is sent back to the police department. Do you, is it then disseminated to surrounding departments as well, or is that up to the officers?
That would be up to us if we forwarded that on. It could be somebody that another agency may be looking for, could be a stolen car or a license plate tied to a, say, a wanted felon. So we would get that information pretty quickly and know that they were in the area or in town.
I think it's an awesome idea.
I do, too.
I love it.
And, and the way that they've chosen their spots for the cameras, it covers the entry and exits to the university, and it's very well thought out. And we greatly appreciate them allowing us to be a part of this opportunity to enhance safety there.
I love it.
Chief, will this be, the cameras be on our poles, or will they be erected with new poles with cameras on it, or will they be connected to our lights system or whatever?
The cameras are all solar-powered, I believe. So there's no need for electricity from the city, and as far as the, on poles.
On poles, okay.
That's the plan right now, but that might be a situation where they might have to use some of the methods in the general perspective.
Okay.
Clearly, there would be a gap with all of that on the table.
Yes.
Now, these cameras, they, so they only record license plates? Or are they recorded 24 hours a day?
Well, they're, they're always on, and they recognize those license plates when the vehicle goes by. But it, but, yeah, the main function is the license plate.
So if, say, an assault occurs on the property, and the person is on foot and not drive the vehicle, then it necessarily wouldn't help with that situation, just looking for the license plates?
It's, it's mostly looking for license plates, yes.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
We're, we're looking at that, basically facial recognition and all the, frankly, the privacy points to go with that and the assault issues and so on like that. That's the second phase of our project. Candidly, there's a lot involved with that, and a lot of the tech, technology continues to evolve literally monthly. And we're trying to be very sensitive to what makes the most sense, to your point about, and a prevention point of view, but also have respect to privacy, for instance, where, you know, we have dormitories and things like that, and that we have to be obviously appropriate from a coverage point of view. That's phase two. We already have a camera system placed at the institution, we just don't want to upgrade it.
I know I have seen some of those cameras that focus on license plate, but also it has the ability to see the driver.
Well, we're, we're told, to your point, that, to the chief's point, this was really what our collective team liked about this. They learned, the system learned, as we go. And we asked that very good question, you know, the sense we had, and it was the Thomas question about facial recognition, that it would not do that. Because I'll give you an example that we all thought about, and we, we talked about a bicycle, if someone's trying to get away, and that was a question of, we have a license plate, but it is motion active. Oh, sorry.
When people's training, so they need to be able to use.
Okay, sorry. So for instance, a motorcycle, or, a motorcycle would be picked up, but a bicycle most likely would not be evens motion. So this, this system is evolving, and that's why we thought a longer-term contract, where we can rotate this technology constantly. And that's part of the, not only the maintenance, but just part of the contract itself. Because this will evolve, and to the chief's point, it's, it's a learning system from an artificial intelligence point of view.
Tim, do you want to speak just a few words about how we thought about the museum and this church?
Sure. Thank you, Donna, and thank you all. This system will really augment and greatly enhance. This system will really augment and greatly enhance some of the existing security measures we have at America's National Churchill Museum. Not on the diagrams are the measures we already have in place for security reasons. We don't share everything we have at the museum. However, I can say that the measures we have at the museum have already, while not this complex as far as identification and recognition, assisted local authorities when incidents have happened surrounding the museum. We've used footage and camera footage to help in investigations. And I think this will greatly enhance our ability to work with you and other law enforcement agencies if something were to happen. So I think this is a terrific measure, an insurance policy, if you will, for not only the campus, but the museum and the community. And it's, I think, a great thing that we're doing this.
Councilman West, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
So a couple of things. So you say it's solar powered, so, you know, December gets kind of dark most of the time. Is it going to have enough battery power to sustain it and those kind of data? I mean, like today, it was even pretty dreary a lot of the day.
The answer is, we ask this question, we believe so, and that's where this comes in on the maintenance and the tracking of these systems from the company, that basically they will know if these will go down or not working, and they're in a monitoring perspective. At least, that's what they're representing to us, and we're going to test that.
And like Westminster and Seventh are pretty busy streets, so you'd imagine there'd be a lot of recording there, so that they have capability for quite a bit of time.
As the chief brought up, there will be plenty of info, there will be plenty of data, and then the question is, how long would that be stored, and how much data will they store? And that's something we'll just have to go and work through, and we'll work with, obviously, the chief and his department and the sheriff's department as well. But you're exactly right, Mike.
You know, I think what you're doing is a great idea, the type of students and citizens in the area as well. Have we approached William Woods? Are they interested in anything like this?
So the answer is that we did not approach them, because we started looking at it as right as Dr. Marlin was coming in, but I intend to talk to him about it.
Sure.
And we've actually talked to the chief about some exercises together as both institutions, but that's brilliant, it's preliminary stages.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
I want to question myself. If the city wanted to expound on this Flock system, would it all kind of become one network in itself, and then it all feed into the same system as far as the download ability, the information sharing?
In the future, say the city wanted to put a camera on South Business, North Business as you come into town, Route F, maybe Route O. It wouldn't necessarily be tied into Westminster system, but we would still be able to obtain all that information, have those alerts immediately to the police department and the sheriff's department. And, you know, say Jefferson City was looking for somebody that they thought came this way, and we got a hit, they would be able to access that information as well through Flock with the inter-user agreements.
These cameras are becoming more prevalent all across the world, really, and it's something that I think we all welcome for the security side of it. The privacy part of it is, you know, concerning a little bit. We talked about this before, that when you give an inch, sometimes they take a mile. And if the technology advances, will you come back to us and say, hey, we want to start doing facial recognition, those types of things?
Sure, absolutely.
And at some point, we may have to do a work session about this, see what a ordinance would look like in city limits to see what we want in our city. I don't know. But definitely, I like the idea.
Well, thank you for your time this evening, and I'd just like to make one other comment, if I could, please. And I'd like to thank the chief's department, and Chief Myers's department, and the sheriff's department, and the police department. And our students just left, and let's put it this way, we had some events this past year, but they were very responsive and very much appreciate the partnership. So thank you, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all for seeing us, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You need these, you want these back?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, next up, Nick Thomas is here on behalf of the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. He had my quest for Drive to Survive.
Yeah, so it's our ninth annual car truck, we added Jeeps this year, and bike show. We're having it at Boyd &amp; Boyd this year. And we wanted to kind of relieve the parking lot of, like, the vendors, and we'll have a bounce house and different things like that. So we would want to see if we could actually close North Ravine between the bank and Boyd &amp; Boyd, since there's no, there will be no blocking any entrances or anything through And it would be from around 7:00 to about 5:00. Our car show runs, starts at 10:00, and 3:00 is our awards, so that would give enough time to set up and take everything down between that time. And it's on a Saturday, so hopefully not as much traffic there. But it would not block the bank or anything of that nature either.
Very good, and have you talked to the chief about?
I did, I did. He brought me here.
Does that seem acceptable, chief? Or do you have any things you'd like to add to that or request?
I know what the request is, is quite reasonable, and I see no issues with it. We talked about, instead of maybe having some of the trailer cars park at the state hospital and then drive back to that location, with the increased traffic on East Fifth Street because of Second Street, if it's still under construction, I suggested they just unload there at the site. And if they wanted to have a call car that maybe went back and forth between the state hospital and the car show site to get those people back to their cars, that'd be fine. But just wanted to cut down the noise and the traffic there on East Fifth. Yeah, everything that chief presented is quite reasonable, and I'm excited for them to have a show.
Intersection, the Fourth and Ravine would still be completely open, correct?
Correct. Fourth and Ravine would be open.
Thank you.
And the hospital has agreed to allow us to have trailers park at the bottom of their parking lot, so we can relieve that traffic and take them back and forth.
Again. Make a motion to approve the request?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I think it's a great idea, I appreciate you doing it.
Thank you. It's a wonderful call. It's something we are trying to keep in Fulton. Our first walk was here, so Columbia kind of involved that. So we try to keep our car show here, since this is where we started, so.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you all.
If we can help anymore, let us know. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say yes. Opposed, no. All right. Next up, we have council concerns. Councilwoman may discuss matters or concerns not on the agenda. Council liaisons to the city boards and commissions will also provide a brief review of the most recent meeting. First up, councilwoman West.
Okay, nothing from planning and zoning. I do have a letter I received tonight regarding some lighting along St. Eunice Road, and Ms. Gray also brought up some concerns with the paving there, so I'd ask that it be looked into. And I can get with Daryl a little bit about the lighting situation back there, but I must say, I think the lighting in town is much improved. Think we had, the police department went through and looked at a lot of the lighting throughout the city, because they're out there patrolling the streets, right? So everyone's able to see it. And from a public safety standpoint, it's a good idea. So they provided that to the utility department, they relant a lot. But it seems like it's a never-ending battle with lights, I see them all the time, you know, but I know they are out there working at it, so I appreciate that. But this is asking actually for some new lighting along St. Eunice, so. And then Ms. Gray brought up the paving there, so I'd ask that to be looked in, I don't know what the other item was.
You put up the highway and the first street is Mill Street. And that, the reason, the reason, the grain sits there.
Yes, ma'am.
You say the, 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 the.
Right, so we need to take a look at that. I'm sure, I'm sure our street, street crews will do it. Thanks, Kyle. Thank you.
Very good. Councilwoman Sebacher?
I just wanted to bring up our fire hydrant and handicap parking paint. It's in disrepair. I've seen several spots throughout the city where we have fire hydrants that where the yellow curb is supposed to be painted and it isn't. And I think everybody pretty much knows that we shouldn't be parking there, but it just, it looks kind of ignored. So if we could have somebody take a look at those things, I would be very glad.
She was something we addressed, I suppose.
Yeah, we'll take that.
Thank you.
And anytime during the week, if you guys have issues like that, you can call up to City Hall and talk to the mayor and myself.
Sure. Same text.
No, I asked, smoke signal, but we are working on it, it's for nature.
So we actually, chief has asked, we're working on possibility of using inmates to repaint our fire hydrants as well as the, so that was brought up in our leadership meetings, but we're on it.
All right, great, well, thank you. That's all I have, ma'am.
I'd like to mention, years ago, when I first came to Fulton, there was a crew during the summer, and a lot of these projects were taking place over the summer when they get extra help. And we painted fire hydrants, we painted gas meters, and all over the city of Fulton, and those things got done. So I know a lot of projects are done in the summertime, so I anticipate, I anticipate that will probably be taking place, too.
Probably did you some good, didn't it? Probably did you some good, huh?
Did you some good. I had a crew, I had a high school crew with me, and we took some pride in doing a good job for the city of Fulton at that time.
Very good, thank you. Councilwoman Requret?
Basically, I'm coming in on this also. The streets, the markings on the streets, are we due to update that? We've got some center lines and turning areas that need to be painted, so I'm hoping getting up on that in the springtime. I would appreciate, basically, that, I agree with this. Thank you.
All right, councilman Stone?
Historic Preservation Commission, the commission is thankful for the time that the council spent with us at the last meeting, and the reviewing that opportunity for the proposal to bring back forbid. Also, a big reminder, you've probably seen the signs all around town, this is Historic Preservation Month, and so that's the reason for all the yard signs, and just acknowledging all of the various historic landmarks and properties that we have here in town. Please recognize that, and if you have the opportunity, recognize that property owner. They take pride in that acknowledgement, that recognition, and that registration. So if you have any opportunity to acknowledge a property owner, please do so. And then I have no concerns this evening.
Excellent. Councilwoman Leder?
Yeah, today we actually had an airport advisory board meeting prior to the council meeting. Really, we were starting off, centered around, you know, exposure, how we take the airport to the next level, brainstorming some ideas and some events we want to look to bring to the airport. Also, we discussed the project for the runway lights, and we got four companies we're looking at, and I'll see if we can work with Kyle on that to get that to the next phase, as well as a potential car, cursey car. We had a lot of discussion around the cursey car, that being one of the deltas for the Fulton Airport, so I will be working with the city on that to see what we can do to get that to fruition. Kyle, anything else you'd like to add?
Excellent, appreciate that. And councilman Combs is not here tonight, Human Rights Commission. Lori, is there anything you'd like to?
They met last night to discuss their first annual Juneteenth celebration. That will be held on Saturday, June 18th. It'll be held in Veterans Park at the Actonson Pavilion and Amphitheater. It'll be run, it'll run from noon to 4:00 P.M. They met last night to discuss the layout of the park and where everything would be set up. Things are getting going. They would like vendors, if there's any vendors or food trucks that would like to participate in the event, that please reach out and get them signed up.
Excellent. Yep, sounds like y'all been working hard on that. All righty, next up, councilman Washington.
Thank you, mayor. Couple of things. This is great, thank you for giving me your name, and also just to let you know that I know I've been talking to Dennis about what your concerns on that property, and there's a process, he's working on it. He didn't let it die. He is working constantly every day, trying to see how we can get this thing taken care of. There's a lot of bedding houses that we're trying to deal with and things like that. So I appreciate his work and service. So Dennis, thank you. Any updates that you might want to share with us, we appreciate it. But also on Monroe, I think in the 13, 14, it's a bad, it's an area that it just, a lot of abandoned cars, a lot of, we have a lot of trash and areas that needs to be, it just seems to be really, it's going downhill really fast. And it's somewhere in that 1300, 1400 block of Monroe Street, and those, it was brought to my attention that a lot of cars are there, that are abandoned, that are not up to, that are licensed, and those types of things. So that's something that we probably want to look into. I guess the person that is in health department, is that their responsibility for us to grass? And I'm not sure.
It's complaint-driven, but Dennis gets those calls and tries to deal with them.
Yeah, okay, I know, okay, so I know some of those letters are getting to some of the residents, and they're dealing with it, they're taking care of it, but those are the things that has been brought to my attention, especially the cars and just the trash and stuff around that area. That's it, mayor, thank you.
Very good. Yeah, and that takes time, those letters, you have to wait so many days, and then it takes days to get responses, and then finally get to the point of cutting the grass and it's two feet tall, and they cut it and barely get under the deadline easily, and it's not an easy process. Yep, all right, next up, councilwoman Nelson.
Is everybody ready? Just sink into your seats, I've got a whole cornucopia of things. First, I just want to note, you know, my office is right across from all the work that's going on Second Street. And I want to say that it was really awesome to look out the window the other day and see our city employees pushing somebody's truck and helping them whenever they broke down. You know, they didn't have to step off the job site and help this person, but they did because their truck broke down and they saw somebody needed help. So I really appreciate our workers that are out there that are also helping citizens at the same time. I also got, somebody contacted me today actually about traffic in Tanglewood. There's people that are going really, really fast down Tanglewood Way. They asked if we could put up a digital speed limit sign. I don't know if that's something that's possible to do. You know, I know that Powell and I worked on getting some slow signs put out there, and I do think that that's helped a little. We just have so many children, and I just wasn't sure if that was a possibility, if we could have that. And then the utility board, I know that we have Resolution Number 3448, and we have a representative with us tonight to go over all of that. And Charlie, I see you back here, too. I don't know if you would like to come up and speak about the, the utility board is in favor of Resolution Number 3448 on tonight's agenda, and it was voted on unanimously. So I don't know if, Charlie, you'd like to speak on that while you're here?
No.
Okay.
Just waiting for your yes or no.
Okay, excellent. So they are in favor of that, and I know that we're going to hear from a representative from Burns &amp; Mack tonight as well. And then, you know, unfortunately, I think that we need to buckle down for the summer. I think that we're going to be in for a long, a long summer, Sykesville. We got an update from Sykesville, and they're down to 65 percent, is that right, Daryl? Of operations, they're having trouble, you know, getting Um, of operations. They're having trouble, you know, getting people to work and, you know, so I think that we need to be prepared for that.
Excellent. We appreciate that update. All right.
Not, not the funnest stuff.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of gloom and doom some days with the U-Board, but, uh, but you just, we have to do the best, next best thing. And that's what we always try to do, so. If, if it's bad news, we want to hear it and we appreciate that. So, all right. Next up, we have resolutions. Uh, first up, Councilman West, if you would present resolution thirty-four forty-eight.
Sure. Can I get to the right page? Sorry. Here we are. That's the bad thing about an old guy and technology. Okay, resolution number three-four-four-eight. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents in relation to an agreement with Burns and McDonald pertaining to the Stinson Creek Integrated Management Plan. I move for adoption of resolution number three-four-four-eight at tonight's council meeting.
Second? I have a motion and a second. And tonight we have, um, the chairman's going to introduce our folks from Burns and Mack to talk about what we're doing.
And Anna?
And Anna.
Don't forget Anna.
I'm going to make the introductions and then I'm going to sit down, okay? But we do have Cliff Kate here from Burns and Mack out of the Kansas City office. And one of the reasons we did choose Burns and Mack to try to get this started was twenty sixteen, you know, one of our last survey, we threw all the meters out. And then we developed what Kyle likes to call the heat map, and that's what we've been focusing on, on our relighting and stuff, was that work in twenty sixteen. And he's bringing back the same team that worked on that. They two out of Saint Louis Office, two out of Kansas City, and one out of Southwest Missouri. So, they're all, all the team members are very familiar with folks and have a complete, maybe like this before for us. And actually training some of our workers of how to meter and how to smoke, smoke correctly. I'm going to shut up and let that go. All right, Anna. Look, good evening, um, Mayor and councilmembers. Thanks so much for allowing us to come up here and speak. Anna's here to make sure I'm saying stuff right, right, Anna. So, she's here. It's good to see familiar faces too, so, uh, I like seeing you guys all, all the time. So, um, if, uh, you're probably familiar, if not familiar, that Stinson Creek is the receiving stream to your wastewater treatment plant, definitely. Right, so, um.
Everybody has a sheet if you want to take a look at it in front of you.
Yes, no, I appreciate that, yeah. So, and you'll see the gears over there too, so. But Stinson Creek is the receiving stream to your wastewater treatment plant, effluent. And, uh, Stinson Creek also experiences low dissolved oxygen sometimes during the, some, during, different times during the day and different times during the year.
Mainly in low flow times.
During low flow times, yeah.
So, we're on the three oh three D, D list for low D O, dissolved oxygen, and organic sediment. Um, and so we're doing our part at the plant to try and minimize what we're sending to the plant, or to the, the creek. And that's why we're bringing them in because we have our new, currently, our permit is under a city, um, review with, from DNR. So right now, it's, it's sitting, um, between us and DNR on negotiating our new permit. So that's why we're bringing them in to help us negotiate the new permit and also bring in this integrated management plan to try and give us some more time to upgrade, um, or study our, our city and then also, um, do some optimization at my plant. So there will be a little bit of optimization at my plant to remove some of the nutrients that we have, so phosphorus and nitrogen.
So with the low dissolved oxygen, DNR's come back and told the city they need to fix this problem, right? You need to fix your effluent limits, right? And so their recommendation was you need to fix it at the treatment plant. That's directly upstream where the creek, the low D O is being measured. And after looking at that, and I think you've received some different quotes on how much that would cost to make those improvements, and that's about a thirty million dollar fix at your wastewater treatment plant to potentially fix that problem. And that's not, still not going to get you off the three oh three D impaired water list. So, our approach is more of a holistic, uh, approach to develop an integrated management plan, uh, to holistically look at your system, look at your, your creek, your watersheds, but also your sanitary sewer system as well, to see if we can make some beneficial, um, well, community, beneficial community, um, improvements and incremental improvements that can get you off that list and, and increase your water quality of Stinson Creek. And when I say incremental improvements, what we want to do is take a look at different, uh, improvements along the way. And once we get you off that list, the improvements can stop, your capital improvements can stop. So you're not spending a thirty million dollar one-time fix that may or may not get you off that list. I think the other thing that Anna kind of mentioned, your effluent limits right now, they're not going to get any better. So, DNR is giving you some pretty stringent effluent limits right now. And through an integrated management plan and through our approach, we feel that this is negotiating power. We can go back and talk to, um, DNR with them, especially getting you off your three oh three D impaired list will help improve that negotiations as well. So, it's a, it's a multi-phase, um, approach to doing this. Um, it's been successful in other, um, cities. And this is, DNR's accepted that in the past and kind of slows the spend down. So that's kind of our goal with this.
And currently, we are in the process of, um, so, tiles helped us and put in some flow monitor, or for level monitors in the creek. So we've got three spots that we're monitoring the creek level. And then, um, we will have four of our city flow monitors placed in several lines that, that, uh, Burns and Mack has strategically placed. And then with this plan, they will do an additional six meters, flow meters for us and two rain gauges so that we can, um, kind of measure the flow and, and rate against the, the rate. How does the rain affect our inflow and infiltration? So, going back to kind of that study we did in two thousand and sixteen and comparing where are we now versus where we're, where were we then? Because we've done some improvements and we are continuing to do improvements.
Yeah. So we set a base mark, two thousand and sixteen or whatever, where your, your flows are and how much inflow and infiltration you're getting in your system. So now it's time to measure how much, the rehab that you've done, how much flow you've taken it out and see how it's still affecting not only your system, but how it's affecting your plant and your discharging and other issues. And I, and I'll go back and say that the effluent limit that we talked about, the stringent effluent limits, those aren't going to change, right? Those are, those are strict. Hopefully we get some negotiating power. But as you grow, you're only limited to the amount that you can discharge, the limits you can discharge. So it's impeding how much you can, um, grow as well. So the water quality, developing or making improvements in the water quality of your Stinson Creek is important for not only meeting your limits, but also for the rate.
And by doing this too, we can also go to DNR and say, hey, we have been calculating this, please come and test it. So they're coming more often.
So after each improvement, let's test it. Has it, has the water quality improved enough that gets you off the list and you're in compliance? If it has.
Because they, they came after we did our original improvement at the plant and did some studies. But they could only use certain years of the study because of the flow in the creek or this or that. And so, they, they need more data. And so, we want to, I mean, these two cog wheels, we have two wheels, one's the stormwater study and one's the collective system. And so we're kind of combining those together. They don't have to be done in step. You can do several of them at the same time or, you know, I mean, it just, they're, they vary. But, so that's what we're going to be studying now. But once we do some more of our own studying here, we can say, okay, DNR, we think we've improved. Like, we're going to, um, cogwheel number one, task order one, is looking at my wastewater plant and optimizing some, adding some alum or something to my plant to pull out, try and pull out some of the phosphorus. Um, so that's one of our nutrients that is coming down the line. I mean, by twenty thirty, we are going to have to be less than one milligram per liter. That is already DNR's, you know, um, set for our size of cities. So, it's, it's something that we need to be working on. So we can say, after we pull that out and do that trial, we're going to say, okay, come back and look at the stream and check to see how is the stream acting now that we've done this and removed this nutrient level.
Yeah, and I think some of the improvements that we look at are, how can we, how can we do improvements that best benefit the city? Where the city can see it, because if you do a thirty million dollar improvement at your treatment plant, you're going to put a fence around it and nobody's really going to see those improvements. But if we look at a watershed approach where we maybe look at, um, maybe building a pond or a park that slows the, uh, the flow down and the effluent coming off of, or the runoff, um, that helps improve your, your creek as well. So, you get more benefits out of some of the improvements that maybe recommend Congress.
So when you say things like bias time and being compliant and thirty million dollar project, I start thinking about consequences if we don't meet these goals. What, what does that look like?
Uh, well, I think DNR's just going to make your, I mean, they're, they're set.
They're, if, if we do not, yeah, I mean, right now, um, my, well, I mean, they're going to give us some time. We have to come up with a schedule, a compliance schedule, kind of like we had in our past permit or our permit that we currently run under. We have a compliance schedule.
Yeah.
And so that's what we're working on is what is a reasonable time for us to try and meet these different goals? So, um, right now, in the draft, it has two tiers. So we have our, our term, our limits right now. We'll have a second, you know, set of limits, the interim limits. And then we have our final limits that are the thirty million dollar, you know, if we don't do anything.
We don't, let's see.
We will have to spend, because that's the technology. That's the only technology that we found, it's twenty, thirty million dollars.
So there aren't necessarily sanctions or fines or things of that nature that the city could see as a consequence?
Well, if we.
Or are there?
If we don't.
If you don't, yes.
But we're, but we're trying to buy more time so that we have time to try and.
Because we don't want those.
No. Developing this integrated management plan buys you time. It stretches that compliance out to, to give you more time to find solutions.
And there are, um, grants for integrated management plans. So, I mean, we've got that grant money that we can pull from. We've got other grant money that we can, you know, also pull from as well.
There's also regionalization grants, and so we talked about a regionalization which could help also meet some of your water quality or give you some, um, negotiating power with DNR. So there's grants out there for that. There's also a lot of stormwater grants that are coming up, um, in the near future. And ARPA, I know you guys put in a lot of projects for ARPA, some of those stormwater projects you put in for could also help with that. So grants and funding could be, become available by this time period.
And by doing this, we're trying to cut back significantly on the amount of money we are going to spend in the long run.
Exactly.
Guess with that being said, you say long run, but is the thirty million dollars inevitable? I mean, are we going to get there in the ten, twenty years from now? Is this based on population growth and?
That's, that's a very good question. I mean, that's, that's hard to tell based on population growth and other restrictions that could, DNR could imply. But if you put thirty million dollars in it right now, you're not going to meet the future requirements they put in it, nor will you meet the growth requirements that you may need in the future. So this gives you time to see how the cities are going to do this.
The, hopefully, the, the watershed, is it more just the constant control of the creek then? Is it, you know, keeping it, getting it going from a low flow condition, but also trying to control the high flow condition? Is that really the ultimate goal to help with our dissolved oxygen content?
It's, it's maybe some of that, but it's also maybe point sources that you may find as we do a study along the creek. I mean, we're going to do a hydraulic study on the creek, which should be able to tell us a lot of more about it.
Okay.
And also contaminants that enter the creek, go into play.
Well, and, you know, golf courses, um, like defertilizer, a lot.
Sure.
Um, and so that adds nutrients to this creek that impairs it. Because the algae likes to grow. So you see green algae, you've got lots of nutrients. So, the, the more buffers that you can have between the creek and, and where your runoff is, the better it is. Because you want to minimize how much you can have.
And we're trying to mitigate some other issues such as mining runoff that's been done decades ago.
Right.
That's still contaminating our creeks. So those are things that we continue to look at them. This stuff is going to keep coming back to you guys. There's going to be more money that has to be spent. But this is a great opportunity and thank you to Burns and Mack with our meeting with DNR that this opportunity exists.
You bet. And we'll continue meeting with DNR with you. So we're here through the whole process.
And within the study too, you know, there might be some things that are proposed that we feel like as a city we just can't accomplish. You know, and then we go back and we say, you know, we've done all the research, here's all the, the data, and this is just not something that we can do. So then we look at something else.
And the more information we get, the, yeah, exactly.
The reason why we're looking at regionalization as kind of something in our pocket is because these, um, communities or these little areas that have these little package plants or lagoons are out of compliance. And if we can pull them out of compliance, or into our system, it pulls it out of the creek. But, like Lauren said, if we decide later on, we just, it's not feasible for us to take these in. But we want to have that option with DNR because then they're like, oh, you know what, they want to work with others. And that's why I say, what will you give to us? If we take these others in.
Yes.
What are you going to do for us as a city? Will you change our limits? Will you, you know, extend, you know? So, that's where we're looking at on the regionalization. We're not saying we have to regionalize everyone.
No.
Okay? So, we're just looking at the possibility.
Leverage.
Leverage, yes.
Exactly, yeah.
Because there, there will be a carrot and a stick to that conversation, right?
With DNR, correct.
Well, no, I meant with the, the lagoon owners, the smaller neighborhoods.
Oh, yes, oh, yes. Yeah, no, we would have just like, you take you over and.
No.
Well, no, what I meant is, you know, right now, if we put, if we put some of these, um, analyzers in and we can demonstrate where that neighborhood, that small, you know, neighborhood, you know, lagoon or whatever is causing the issue, then it's, it's, it's either, you know, join us or, or this is what you're going to have to do on your own in order, because we've got proof now that you're the one that's contributing to the problem. Because I know that was one of the conversations we had had was, you know, before the opportunity for the regionalization was to go to these and say, look, this is what you're causing us. So, you know, you need, you need to be a part of this thirty million dollar solution.
Or they're going to get fined.
Right.
Exactly.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the study from two thousand and sixteen was within a sketch of us not being on that list, the three oh three list, is that correct?
That can win.
We can't speak to that. Now, now Phil can tell you the whole history of it. I think we probably captured you for two hours.
Two and a half.
So he may have told the whole story.
Two, two and a half hours.
But I, but I know, I know the.
Two thousand and ten is the TMDL.
That's what it was.
Is when, so that was before, yeah. That was, so, that was before this, this INI study. Basically, the INI study was, um, in our two thousand and fourteen permit, they said we needed to reduce how many SSOs or sanitary, san, sanitary sewer overflows. So basically, anything that comes out on the ground from like manholes or things like that, minimizing those. And so they came in and said, you have to do so much work, I believe, right? He's coming up, he's like, he's taking over.
At our meeting with DNR, last time they studied the creek, I think it was Hope, said it was very close to getting off last time. Doesn't mean.
That's, that's what I'm thinking of.
I know what I thought too.
That's when they studied the creek last time.
It just made me feel like, yeah, we just do a little bit, boy, we could, we could get ourselves.
I call it the dirty list.
Yeah, right.
I think he said that twice in that meeting, he was close. He was there. So was you.
It resonated with me that this is definitely something.
We can make some incremental improvements to get there.
Yeah.
And once we get off the list, we're crazy.
Get off the list, you get new ones?
It's a big, big deal.
And here you go, yeah.
I mean, we will have nitrogen and phosphorus limits. Those are, are for sure. Something that we can, and are, and are more attainable.
Right.
Um, more affordable. Um, what they want us to get to is the thirty million and it's, it's not very attainable.
Any other questions? We just appreciate your time, all of you, Anna included.
Thank you, yes.
You bet. It's great seeing you all. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Yes, sir.
I just wanna say I like the ownership. Anna, you called it your plant several times, so.
It is hers.
So she can pay the thirty million. That's all I wanna say, sorry, mayor.
That's okay, all right. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Very good, thank you. Moving on, resolution number thirty four forty nine, if you would, Councilwoman Seibacher.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number thirty four forty nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to make application and sign all necessary documents in relation to the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant through the United States Department of Justice and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to adopt resolution number thirty four forty nine at this council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And is someone here to, is Patrick here? Chief, would you like to tell us a little bit about the grant? Now, Patrick must be deceased.
Yes.
Sorry.
This is a yearly grant that we've received for several years now and it helps supplement the budget for the bullet resistant vests that the officers wear. Those vests usually have a shelf life or a lifespan of about five years. So it helps us keep rotating those out and keeping the officers in a, in a safe, fresh vest.
Excellent. All right, have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Appreciate that. All right, next up, ordinance says, Councilwoman McLeve, if you would present bill sixteen thirty eight.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number sixteen thirty eight, an ordinance amending section ninety four dash one twelve, storage and placement of waste and waste containers Fulton City Code by enacting additional legislature regarding residential waste containers, placement and establish an effective date. I make a motion, uh, for bill number sixteen thirty eight, the next reading, the second reading at our next meeting.
Second. It's okay. We, we do have a motion and a second. The changes are, are in your packet and fold and it's on the collection site or the, bringing your can back to your, to your house. We're having an issue with that, more complaints. You have, Mr. Boone, if you would.
An issue that he pointed out to us, and really what it is, is just that the ordinance, to me, it's pretty self explanatory, but I think we're making it clear that not only do you need to not set your can out more, more than twenty-four hours before it's time to pick it up, but even after it's tipped, that you need to remove it back to your, your house or, or your garage or something closer to your premises within twenty-four hours after it's tipped. And so the ordinance, this, this, I think Courtney drafted it for us and it makes it real clear and plain that that's, that's what the intent is. Because I think even Chief Labwin and I kind of rode around some neighborhoods and seen that quite a few were still sitting out and their day had passed.
So that's all about the consequences? I'm assuming this is a city violation, a city ticket, a fine? What can our constituents expect if they get called to work a double and someone makes a complaint and their can's out two days later?
Chief, and my faults are responsible.
I'll just say the discussion we had, I think, was that they might lose their can. You know, they might just lose their can if it gets repeated offenses. There's gonna be, I think we have some stickers that we put on the cans, is that right? So we hope it doesn't get to that point, but, but yeah, at some point it might just end up, hey.
And we could also issue, we could also issue something on their bill.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's not something that I think police should have to get involved with.
Right.
But it is a matter of being responsible.
Absolutely.
Pull your can back in. So, and it, it should, it would not be that, and we haven't discussed that level of what the fines to assess, but, you know, it wouldn't be something exorbitant, but it should be something to make somebody feel, ooh.
Oh, absolutely, and I'm all for the accountability. I'm just, I, I want everybody to be aware.
Safety, yes.
It's about safety.
Absolutely.
They leave cans out all over the place. People just don't bring them.
Going around.
I've almost hit cars, I mean, hit, hit, you know, cans.
And I've seen them left in the side, in the middle of the sidewalk. You know, somebody's driveway in their sidewalk, covering their sidewalk. And I have moved one on many occasions, but I thought this was already in here. This surprised me that we didn't have this. And I'd asked Darren to put, Darrell to put this in our, Darren, pardon me, to put this in our newsletter several months ago. So we need to keep reminding people to do this. We might wanna remind them to cut their grass too while we're at it, but. So I wholeheartedly appreciate this being in here, but enforcement is gonna be a bit of a question, I think. So we're gonna have to approach that as we go.
And I think a warning is good, you know, for allowing their trash cans so people know. Hey, and then that way, if it isn't a rare incidence where they did get called, they didn't have to work a double, then, you know, they had the warning, maybe even three strikes and then you're out.
And let, let the neighbors be neighborly and move it.
You know, honestly, we have a neighbor that is awesome about, when we're gonna be out of town, we ask him every time and he is more than willing always to take our trash can out. So I really appreciate him.
They pull them in.
I'm all for the warnings and the stickers and even as awful as it sounds, something on their bill, I'm, I would caution us to get into removing the trash cans because folks are, they're still gonna have trash. And they're gonna leave it at the street. And that, that would be my only concern, but I agree a hundred percent that we need to do something to have that level of accountability, just maybe not that. I'm not a fan of that part.
Well, we're trying to be proactive, I think, is what we're really trying to do. Make sure that the ordinance is clear.
Absolutely.
Because ordinance was very much open ended.
Oh, absolutely, and I see it being more as a, as a attempt to be a deterrent than anything else. So, and I get that, I do.
One of the things that you. Complaint driven, or is it?
It's gonna be more so complaint driven. I mean, honestly, we do not have the resources to go police folks garbage. Even though I see a lot. But it will be complaint driven, but, and there will be instances, I'm sure, that like Mr. Boone said, and Chief Labwin drove around, so they were just driving around to see how, you know, prevalent.
And it is an issue.
It is, it is an issue. But even to your, your, your comment about people having trash, I have noticed instances where the trash cans, not only are they not pulling them back in, they're just putting garbage in on the curb. So I think the first start, my, you know, in just doing this is getting people's attention to understand this is something that we're looking at. It is a quality of life issue. You know, we don't want garbage strolling around. And it is a matter of, this is simple.
Yes, yeah.
Their own wheels.
They're, they're.
Yeah, we're very fortunate to have.
Mr. Watson.
No, I was just going to refer that we can't, if you remove the trash can, then you remove revenue. So, so I'm, that's out of the question.
Yeah, that was a bad idea. That's me being grouchy, I think. But overall, yeah, it's a great plan and we'll work on it. I think it is never gonna be perfect like our grass ordinance, you know. It's gonna be a struggle like everything, you know. But you got good neighbors, you got bad neighbors. And that's where we just have to try to get along with each other. The city will work the best that we can.
Absolutely.
So this ordinance definitely gives you a lot more to do what you gotta do. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. And we'll see that again next time. Next up, we have second reads. Councilman Stone, if you would present bill number sixteen thirty four.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number sixteen thirty four, an ordinance amending section one hundred and ten dash three forty, parking on certain streets prohibited or limited. Fulton City Code by prohibiting stopping, standing and parking on a portion of East Tenth Street and establishing effective date. I make a motion for, to approve for third reading at the next scheduled council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I do appreciate you extending that to the next meeting. We did hear from a constituent tonight, Mr. Bacon, the homeowner on the corner there about that. So we, I know we did get a recommendation from our, from our street, or, yeah, our street commission to advance this, but when we hear from, from our citizens, it means something. Mr. Mayor.
Have you ever had five cars?
I think I have.
Okay.
I think the last one, it was probably about two years ago and they were several adults living there. So they had just the downstairs, probably four cars.
Yeah.
Very busy. And the, the residents just to the west of that is, Bacon at this point, I think they're just moving in. I think the property was just purchased, so, you know, they would probably be concerned. They came in party time, going out, and I just lie, that would probably affect them as well. Like I said, I think they just purchased.
That one has a driveway though, doesn't it? Does that one have a driveway? It's got off-street parking.
Thought we had a map in the last meeting, but.
I think that was.
Do you have something?
Go ahead, finish up.
I suggested last meeting that we look at, you know, a timeframe for this, like when the school buses would be going through. I mean, school's about to let out for the summer. Do we really need to have this enforced between now and mid-August or something like that? And, you know, on Saturdays, Sundays, you know, evenings? I just think it should be, we should limit the, we should cut down the times on it.
I think we talked about that in the meeting and there was a concern about that having an enforcement issue.
Right.
Well, I know that Chief had said too that he was concerned about all the kids going to the recplex. Isn't that correct? Lots of walkers there, lots of kids walk in.
Correct, because that's the side on the sidewalk.
Yeah. But that's why we've got the brand new sidewalks and the crosswalks and everything else on Tenth Street. We just did all of that work to make that more amenable to foot traffic and safety.
Right. Yeah, there's a driveway of the house, the next house. There's nothing at the house, the other house though, so. Really? Well, maybe a little bitty one, yeah. Yeah, right there.
And I know time of day would be very difficult for the resident. I mean, if you work evenings or overnights, then.
I agree.
Not being able to park there during the day while you're asleep doesn't help you any.
There is parking options on Grand.
Right.
North of Tenth, opposite side from the school. So there is an option there. And on the south side of Tenth Street, between Bluff and Grand, there's parking options there as well. So it's not like we're eliminating all of them. We're eliminating one half of one block.
One half.
I think there is no parking on the south side.
To the, I think it's on the western side from Bluff to a certain section, isn't that right? But then past that, you can park down towards the stop sign.
Where they tore that house down, there's a sign there and everybody always ignores it. No parking here to the corner and there's always, I think it's a warm-up thing in that part.
It looks like you have a little bit of a driveway on, off of Grand that.
There was a very short driveway. It was probably about ninety feet long. I had one renter car on there. The back tires used to sit on the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk.
And the car almost touched the road. It was tiny.
Yeah, it doesn't look very long, you're right.
And that basement had been filled in right there just due to that drag. And then a type, doing a type here, right down the downstairs that she stayed home on, she's got three kids, so in winter time she would have to get up early in the morning and allow you to take all three kids with her and move her car so it's not in the way of school parking. And then next time when she left her egg, she'd have to walk on the street with her car. So that went right into the time to be difficult to stand in.
I'd really like to see a compromise of some kind. I don't know what it is, though.
Yeah, I like the sidewalks. I mean, kids walk on sidewalks, you know, walk on sidewalks through schools.
The only, one thing to consider, I know other communities have done this in the past with on-street parking. They have some areas that have permitted on-street parking, so they have spots where you have to have a permit to park, especially during maybe certain hours or all the time. So that could be an option on that Grand Street. I think there's about eighty foot or so between the intersection, twenty foot back of the intersection and the next, and on Grand Street and the next driveway, you know, eighty foot, that's about four parking spaces on Grand Street that, you know, if we're open and available to the residents, I know it's not five, but.
Do you see two of the, the employees for the middle school, they park right there. So two of the spots that are up at four are taken by the school. And the school parking lot, so the whole floor of the middle school is coming onto the right. And there's, there's a small lot, how fast the school is.
And I know the school is, is working on plans. I've been reviewing plans on the middle school and they're trying to add parking. So hopefully that'll help them, but, you know, other than, other than adding, you know, Mr. Bacon having to add parking on his lot on that back side, you know, if there, if a compromise could be that, that on-street parking, those spots were designated to those residents, that may be, that may be an option. Just, I, I know other communities have done it, so I just wanted to throw that out as an option.
I don't think that that would be a bad, you know, a bad option. If those residents had, were the only people that were parking in the front of that house and all, you know, all the time, at least they would be aware of, you know, the, the activity.
And I, you know, I have not talked with the chief, so that may, you know, present an issue with him. So that may, it's just something I was looking at and an idea to throw out there, but I have not vetted that with the chief.
I love your account, I'm just worried that something like that would set a precedent.
They could be identified, that's what's done in other communities.
Correct.
That they actually, you know.
And we have other areas in town where there are people that have no driveways. And, you know, like Sixth Street, I'm thinking of over here. Can we, what, what was the motivation of the traffic commission for this?
I was the motivation for the traffic commission.
Okay.
Safety. I mean, it was a safety issue with the middle school and all the walkers at the, to the middle school and all the walking traffic to and through the middle school and hopefully to the rec center during the summertime.
When the buses are going both directions, they, the vehicles there can be four wide and you cannot see these children. And those children aren't watching you and as much as we like to think that they are or want them to, they're not watching.
Seeing adults not watch, so I know.
So it's, it's terrifying to be a parent and to watch these kids dart out into traffic because they can't be seen because these vehicles are four wide. And it's, there, there has to be a solution.
Yeah, there has to be a solution. I'm just not sure this is the solution. So I would like to send this back to the traffic commission, my recommendation, to come up with another idea. I don't know what that idea is, but.
Have we had accidents there involving children or does, do we have data to support this? Other than just the scare factor?
I could research any type of traffic accident that would be there.
And I really don't wanna wait for a child to get hurt.
I think the value is, yeah, the value is, we don't wanna wait till there's an injury. So it's, I mean, it's definitely a, it implies a safety concern. We need to figure out what the appropriate action is to hopefully mitigate that. But also compromising the citizens in the area too.
I wish we had had this conversation before we did all the renovation. We could maybe made the street a little, maybe, I don't know, a little wider.
I don't think it's a little wider.
It's pretty wide now.
Yeah, it's nice.
I like the idea, I like Kyle's idea, if we can come up, he said some, some studies that he's seen, the residence parking only and something like that, that sounds more realistic to me to be able to do that than just leave it open for the public to use. I think it should just be for residents only.
In my opinion, if we're going to allow permitted parking, then we're allowing parking. I mean, it, if we're looking to solve a problem by allowing permitted parking, that's not solving a problem.
I think he's suggesting allowing. I think he's suggesting allowing the permitting on the Grand Street, not.
Yeah, that was, that suggestion was made to the Grand Street side, so that away the complication with the school, and all the school traffic parking there, that hopefully that would mitigate that.
Thank you, I misunderstood. I thought we were going down a rabbit hole of allowing permitted parking on 10th Street. And I wasn't seeing the solution.
Yeah, the only concern would be on that is if we do it for that, for Dennis.
Yeah.
Are we going to have to do it for every other citizen that has that request in town? So, that would be the concern on doing that. But I definitely think it could go back to the Traffic Commission and see if you guys so choose to do that.
Madam Deputy Clerk, what's our protocol? We either, we either vote this.
I have a motion and a second. Goodness, to the third reading at the next meeting, if you want to continue on with that. And in the meantime, Traffic Commission wants to reconvene and discuss further.
It'd be tabled.
Or we, or we can vote it down, or we can.
Are we rejecting or saying, come again? You know, I don't know.
I think that we can go ahead and go with it, and if we have a problem with it, then Traffic Commission can meet, and they can bring it, and they can present it, then we can make our final decision on that third, on that, the next reading.
Do you think it's realistic, Valerie, for the Traffic Commission to meet on this again before the next council meeting? I'm not actually on the Traffic Commission. I just went as a, as a guest. Mary, do you think that that's realistic?
Yes, but I don't think the time, I mean, I think it should be tabled and should be looked at again. Totally. In other words, yeah.
So, you don't feel like it's realistic to meet on it and discuss it before the next council meeting?
Not before the next council meeting, I don't.
And come up with a solution. I mean, we could talk, but.
Leave longer.
Currently, it's labeled, you know, prohibited or limited, so it still captures the parking permit idea, right?
No, this is just about that section of 10th Street, though. The Traffic Commission would have to bring back an amendment for the ordinance.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, you know, we could table it and just bring it back as written. If, if the Traffic Commission can't come up with a compromise, they could bring it back as written, or they could come back with a different, a different amendment.
Give you both.
That seems amenable to, to everyone.
That's okay.
I think, okay. I make a motion, we table this, send it back, and come up with a solution. School year's ending, this will give us a couple of months to come up with a, a better solution. That's my motion.
My second to motion, to table Bill number 1634 for the discussion.
Thank you.
And then, just for clarity, Madam Deputy Clerk, what will happen if, if the table is approved, and then we come back to the next meeting on the 14th of June, and we pull it off the table, then we're still at second reading, correct?
That's correct.
Because we've not, we have not approved.
No.
The move to third reading.
Right.
So, we would still be at second reading.
I believe so.
We'd have to go through that discussion, and then potentially amend it, move it on to third reading.
And remove from the table.
Which we say give us more.
And I'm not sure.
I believe I can confirm that for you, but.
That's, that's how my logic is running it through, is what we're doing is we're pausing second reading, and we're not moving it to third if the table is approved.
I'm not sure tabling is right. We just went to that training.
Yeah.
Bob, what did they tell us for something like this? Do you remember?
I thought, I thought we could table it.
Tabling just moves it one meeting.
Just give it to one.
Unless we don't, unless we never voted back.
Are we just, yeah.
Never bring it back in.
Are we just voted down and move on?
No.
Try again. I don't want to send the wrong message. I think we need to do this somehow, but.
You got a motion and a second, don't we?
Do we have a motion and a second to table?
You do, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We do, and I know we've done it this way in the past, that's the way we've always done it.
I know.
It's wrong, we've been wrong.
The training we just went to, I got a little confused with.
We can find out and correct it in the next reading.
Yeah, you were there too, Renee, what?
I, I, yeah, I was.
What'd you think?
You ask, and I will answer. I think that there's a motion and a second about the reading. You all need to vote that down. And then your motion to table can then be seconded and voted.
If we vote it down, then it just needs to table.
Yeah, then they don't need to table it.
Oh, is it?
I think we should, I always draw my motion to table. You move your second, we just should vote it down and send it back.
But your motion is to take it, to, to do it to the third reading.
Right, so if that does not pass, then it ends, and it's done.
Then they have to redo it again.
All of them.
Yeah.
It has to start over.
All over again.
It has to, that's the opportunity to take it back to the Traffic Commission, have them come up with something different.
Either way, though, right?
And table.
But if, if we vote, if, if the majority votes no to my motion of moving it to third reading, then this, this particular path of this ordinance dies. And it has to be brought back to its.
Yeah.
As a, as a first motion again.
Okay, okay.
He just withdrew his motion.
To take, to, to.
Right.
And, and with creating the possibility of us moving down.
So, he's saying withdraw the motion for the second reading and then do the motion to table. They have to withdraw it to this, yeah, it happens. So, we did the motion for the second reading.
What? I'm not sure tabling was the right, right motion at that time.
Verbalize again your wish to, to take back your motion to table. If you'll verbalize that again.
Okay, I withdraw my motion to table Bill 1634.
Whoever seconded it.
Brad.
Needs to, you need to pull back your second.
Withdraw my second.
There you go.
Motion to table Bill number 18.
1634.
Or 1634.
Okay. So, now we're back into discussion of my motion to go to third reading at the next scheduled meeting.
Right.
I hereby withdraw my motion.
Was that the second? On that?
I think you were.
Yeah.
I withdraw my second.
I've never seen that, it's like, oh.
Yeah, we've never done.
Never done.
Mary, Mary was the second.
Oh.
Now, you know, we don't have to table it.
We don't have to table it.
Mary was the second.
We withdrew the motion to move forward, so. And we removed the second, so we're done.
So, regardless, Courtney will straighten that out next time.
I'm sure she's watching.
She's watching us now, screaming at the computers.
The intent is right, though, guys, like, we know what we want. We'll, we'll look at this, and it'll be done how we wish to do it. We'll get Dennis's input, the Traffic Commission's input again. And we'll move, we'll move forward one way or the other.
Okay.
And let's think far-reaching about other places we have the same issue in town, you know, just, take that into consideration is all I'm asking for. Mr. Mayor?
I concur, sir.
All right.
Very good, is that done?
That was done.
I guess.
As done as we can, as soon as we can do it.
Stick a fork in that one.
Yeah, that was done.
Okay, next up, Councilman Combs is not here, so I would ask, next, if you would, present Bill 1635.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1635, ordinance reclassifying under the zoning code a tract of land located at 917 East Walnut Street in Fulton, Missouri, establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill number 1635 for third reading at this council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? We did talk about this last meeting. A lot less of an issue here. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. We going to do that again tonight or next meeting?
Tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, if you would, again.
Bill number 1635, ordinance reclassifying under the zoning code a tract of land located at 917 East Walnut Street in Fulton, Missouri, establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill number 1635 for final passage at this council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. You've all heard Bill 1635 read three times. At this time, Madam Clerk, you would take roll call for final passage.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Sabeacher?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, one absent.
All right, thank you. Councilman Washington, if you would present Bill number 1636.
Bill number 1636, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning code a tract of land located at 1005 East Walnut Street in Fulton, Missouri, and establish effective date. I make a motion that we move 1635 for tonight for third reading.
Second.
Second.
1636, yes.
Second.
Good catch, very good, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this bill? We've heard that already last meeting. I don't believe there's any controversy on this either. So, any more discussion? Here and then, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. And if you would, again, sir.
Bill number 1636, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning code a tract of land at 1005 East Walnut Street in Fulton, Missouri, and, and establish an effective date. I make a motion that we, we pass 1636 on tonight for final reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. And Madam Clerk, if you would take roll call for final passage.
Ms. Nelson?